Good afternoon, everybody. We appreciate you all coming today. Public comment is limited to up to five minutes per speaker. Speakers may offer effective comments about school operations and programs. The board will not permit any expression of personnel complaints nor defamation comments about the Board of Education personnel and students or against any person connected with Anson County School System. Security issues and matters relating to negotiations, grievances, will not be permitted. We have no one signed up, so we're on to the chair's report. And I would just like to say that I thoroughly enjoyed our convocation. Dr. Little and I were there. It was so upbeat, like none I've ever seen before. So I hope you all's day today was as upbeat as that convocation is and this year goes like that one. At this time, I'll turn it over to our superintendent for his report.
My computer just went down. I'm good, I'm ready. Mr. Baker from Penicoes here today to give us an update on the middle school construction project. So, Mr. Baker, if you come forward and give us an update on where we are, and the board may have a few questions. I know I have one or two. What we have up here, this is the overall site. You guys can see it's an old land. Eighty dead sites. The only challenge of all the higher portions is the poor heat. So if you'll see, there's a roundabout. And we also, the wetlands stand toward you. As you can see up there on the upper right, that's the existing wetlands. All fields, soccer field, softball, those two tables up. In that area, in between, all in the front. That's the basic layout. Excuse me. Pete, was he going out to the public with the mic turned off? He was not?
I mean, just wanted to hear from y'all's microphone.
I want the public to hear this, so could you start from again, sir?
Absolutely. Boy, that is nice. That's really good. All right, going back, take two. As you can see right now, we've got the overall site plan for the new middle school. On the south portion of the site, you can see the little two parallel lines. That's the additional land acquired from the county commissioners. And as you can see, we tried to put the school up at the upper portion of the site, the higher portion. And then this actually incorporates a lot of that additional land acquired from the county commissioners. The only issue that we had, or challenge that we've got, the existing property line that was there actually had a sewer easement going from the high school down to a lower location. So what we're having to do is move that sewer easement down around where you got the cul-de-sac to miss the edge of our school. This shouldn't be a very high impact for the construction. The road coming in, as you can see, up the right northeast corner, we're trying to miss the existing wetlands that's shown in the hatched area so that we can minimize the impact of the wetland area for our road coming in. In the back of the school, we've got a football field, track, soccer field, baseball softball, and then the two rectangles up in the northwest side are practice fields. And in between there, we've got a stream that we're trying to miss. So that was recap number two. How was that? Secondly, if we could go to the large overall site. And you can't, that's good. That's good right there. That's perfect. As you can see, coming into the school, the upper right-hand corner is the road coming into the school. It's a two-lane road coming in. We actually did a roundabout there, one for the buses going up to the north portion of the school. We've got the gymnasium in the back and the cafeteria over there to the right-hand side. So the buses will come in to that location. Then car riders will come in in front of the school in a two-lane, one-way street coming in, and then we will wrap back around, going back out to the main road. So the traffic flow is one of the big things when you're doing a school layout, and this is one thing that we've taken in consideration of making the flow of the car traffic work. All right? Any questions before we get off of this? Yes, sir.
Yeah, but where's the parent parking for like athletic events?
Parent parking? Parent parking, we've got, teacher parking is typically in the back left-hand corner, back in there in the backhand side, right in there. That is correct. The parent parking, if they need to park, can park right there in the front of the building, right? That's correct, in that location there. The front door, as you can see, that island up there in, I don't know if, almost, nope, right there in the middle of the, right, down just a tad, right there. That's the entrance to the school, right there. So the parent parking is right there in front of the school. And we try to put enough parking so that in after-hour participation, basketball, football, soccer, baseball, softball, you've got plenty of parking around the school.
So let me ask another question.
Yes, sir.
I noticed you showed the wetlands on the road going in.
Right.
Are you gonna have to bridge there, or are you gonna culvert, or what are you gonna do?
If we can, if we can stay away from, there is a section there that does not quote-unquote have wetlands delineated. If we can stay in that location, we can disrupt just a touch of those wetlands so that we do not have to bridge over. We can do a culvert, that type of stuff, and we don't have to totally miss the wetland areas. So that's what we're trying to stay away from. And that's why we're getting the core back out, just to make sure of our road locations and things. So yes, sir. And as you can see, I don't know, up there at the roundabout, you can see that little line that comes down to the center of that roundabout. That's actually the sewer line that we're relocating down into that location. And it's only about 200 feet of relocation of the sewer line, so it's not that bad. All right? Any other questions?
Is that sanitary, sir, or storm sewer?
Sanitary. Yes, sir. Yep. This you've seen before. I just wanted to present this back to you. This is our timeline. We presented this back months ago. Our schedule's still the same. We should have our construction documents finished, ready for bid in October. We will bring that to the board for your approval that we are allowed to go out for bid, and just want to make sure you guys are all, we'll advertise sometime the latter part of October, and then receive construction bids hopefully sometime in November, maybe December, something like that, and then maybe in January, start grading, hopefully if the weather's, weather's good. So that's, that's a little bit of aggressive timeline, but I think, you know, as far as if the weather's good and the bids come back in a good number, then we'll be ready to go.
You're saying ground bacon breaking probably in January?
That's correct.
Mr. Baker, in the meanwhile, what kind of things that you and I, you and I are gonna be working on in the meanwhile, I always take, I noticed some colors.
That is correct. That is correct.
Talk to the board and update them on what you and I are gonna be working on.
Yes. We have did a proposed color scheme for the school. And what I'd like to do is bring it to Mr. McLean and whomever else that would like to see it. Look at the color scheme, see that if that's what you guys are liking, if it is, then we will actually make a color board, and that will go into the bid process. So that, and I also gotta get you to sign a little bit of release form for Corps of Engineers to come on your property, so other than that. I will, I need to come back and meet, especially with your staff, just to make sure our plans are progressing, food service, make sure we've gotten all that taken care of, we've met with her, we've emailed back and forth. I think we've got all of the equipment that, that, you know, is needed in the new middle school. And, but I'd like to possibly, if it's your, you know, consideration, meet with the maintenance department and just make sure they know that what we're putting in the school is what you guys have seen in our other middle schools, make sure all that's good. So that's what I'd like to do before we actually say it's complete, is come back and say, this is what we're almost finished with, is this what you guys are wanting, so.
Me not been a part of building the school before, when we do the color scheme, my plans are to invite the middle school administration and his team on making those type of decisions on the color scheme.
That'd be wonderful.
And you, meeting with the maintenance nutrition, just let us know who in. So my question to the board, how much input do you want on those things we just talked about, color scheme? Or you trust me and my team to get it done? How much input and involvement do you want on those type decisions?
We want some approval.
FYI's?
And, and we want final approval.
All right. Let's make it happen.
That's perfect.
Okay, now, I'm making my eyesight, so this is what's, I was your age. Don't think that was too long ago.
I'm with you.
Bottom line, are you, are you proposing opening the doors on, I thought I saw 2024?
Twenty twenty-four.
Build the construction complete date? That's what you're proposing?
That's correct.
Okay. Prices staying in the, in our range?
Right now, prices are still, they're, they're basically flat right now. The consideration is the supply chain, getting the materials to it. We're right now building a new elementary school in Goldsboro. We haven't seen any supply chain issues at this point. We just started grading the mechanical units, they've already got those, so I don't see, I don't see where, unless we have another, I'm not gonna say the word, challenge in America, we should be making up grants.
Okay, we should be on free.
Exactly. Well, and then as far as construction cost, we're seeing anywhere from 250 to $3, $300 a square foot, price-wise. And the last time we were here, we were talking about possibly bidding the whole school, but taking the sixth grade alternate. Still bid the whole school, but taking the alternate for the sixth grade wing, just to make sure that whatever the bid cost is, we've got a project to build in your budget. Right now, the square footage you can see is 133,000 square feet, somewhere thereabouts. The sixth grade wing is about 19,000 square feet. So if you look at that without the, without the sixth grade wing, we're about in the $33 million range, somewhere thereabouts. No, excuse me, the 28. With it, we're about in the 33 or something.
Okay.
So, so hopefully we can get some good prices, get some good participation bid-wise, and make this thing happen straight at.
The quicker you bid, the better, better chance you got, because I don't think there's gonna be one.
No, and the good thing about it, once we're in the mode of bidding it, contractors won't to have their slate, you know, the first of the year, knowing what they're gonna do, the continuation of that year. So hopefully that will, you know, entice a lot of contractors, especially in a project that's not exist.
One thing that caught my eye.
Yes.
I don't know, but the school is facing back southeast, facing the woods. Is that not correct?
It is facing, well, it is facing the road, if you will, that portion of it.
Okay.
Yes, yes. And in that area, I mean, let's face it, we're dealing with what we've got. And, you know, there's only a certain areas that you can put the school without impacting wetlands and a lot of challenges.
Where you're placing it, there's no, gonna be no problem with compaction, is there?
Well, that's another thing we've got to do. Right now, you've got an old soils test. We're gonna have to issue another soils test to make sure that we don't hit any rock or anything like that. See, what we did was we moved the school up on the upper portion of that little crest. No, so we're gonna be cutting some of that off. So we just need to make sure that, one, there's no rock that we're gonna encounter, because that can blow a budget in a heartbeat. And as far as compaction-wise, I don't think you're gonna have an issue where the school is right now. Now, where the roads are, we'll probably have some issues there.
That's totally different. I mean, I'm concerned about the school and the foundation.
Right, right.
Because I know of a school that was built just a few years ago, short time ago, I don't think you had anything to do with it in another county, and they're, you might know about it, they're having a terrific problem now with settling.
No. No, sir, we will not put something in that we're not comfortable with. No, no, sir. We've done foundations on geo-piers, pilings, things like that, but in this, I think just conventional spread footing, you're gonna be fine. If not, we will alert you whenever we get the soils report back. This may be a challenge, but we'll know that when we get some.
Maybe there a hundred years, I don't know.
I'm with you. I'm with you. All right? Anything else?
My two questions you've answered in your presentation. Nothing more, we have questions?
Thank you very much.
If you move that timeline up, sir, we show the needs of quick wins, so if you move that timeline up a little bit for me, it's security.
I am with you. Very good. And congratulations on your first day with students back today. Hope it was good.
Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Can we get a copy of diagram over there?
It's all.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Hey, all my principals, please come to the podium. We need to hear about how your day went. I have not had a chance to debrief with you, because meetings started quickly, so come on up, you have 15 seconds, tell me how your day went. 15, 20 seconds, all we need.
My day went great. All the kids got home safely. We started off the same way. That's my 15 seconds. I couldn't ask for a better staff. We had situations that we faced, and we overcame them easily. So I applaud my staff.
I want to ask a question, because I informed the board that we're having some hiccup with COVID and staff.
Correct.
Some of your staffs starting today and probably next couple of days, how are we all on your staff, and as far as COVID and sickness, we good?
Well, we have about seven staff members down, but like I said, we had, we filled in, and we managed some, you know, my assistant principal's out and data manager, but, you know, things of that nature, but we had a very good first day.
All hands on deck.
All hands on deck, and we made it happen, and you couldn't tell those people were out, but still I need them back.
Hello, we had a great first day. Everything went great. I'm about seven staff members down. However, we made it work. We had people in place, and everybody stepped in and got the job done today. Few absenteeisms, and some of those are just students that's transferred or enrolled in another district, so we've accounted for those students. Mr. McLeod was on campus today. We had about probably, I would say, 25 community stakeholders this morning there to welcome our staff and students back with posters and to greet them with music and balloons, and they also donated school supplies to every student in the school today. So everything went really smooth, no major bus hiccup, so everyone's home safely, and we're ready to start another day tomorrow.
Thank you, ma'am.
We had a good first day, still working on cleaning up a few schedules, got ballgames going on, don't know if we ever missed a beat, so feel like we stopped one day and started the next. So we're just, had a great day, we got two staff members down, but we're, we're moving right along, no problems. So thank you all for your support, thank you, buses, everybody got on the buses home, and a great team, making sure everybody gets where they're supposed to be safe, so thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hello, everybody. We had a quiet day today, quiet day at the middle school, so we were proud of that. We were nine staff members down, a lot of our sixth grade were depleted, but you really couldn't tell. We were able to put strong systems in place and lean on those systems, and we, we just worked through the challenges. We worked through the challenges throughout the day. Really applaud our staff and hashtag, together Bearcats, we will prevail, we will continue to do so. Thank you.
Good evening. Our day ran so smooth that it was kinda scary, but it was great. We had a great day. We were welcomed in by the guys in the tards, Mr. McLeod made it to us, and then we went to Lylesville. We had a lot of guys from the community, and they wore their tards to welcome the kids in this morning. Everything ran smoothly. I really appreciate the scanners for the cafeteria, they were great. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
The day at PPS went really well. We only have one teacher out and one additional staff member. We're hoping that doesn't change. Obviously, it's, it's getting a little tough district-wide. Students were very excited, they love seeing each other, love seeing their teachers, you know? The newness is still there, so there's a lot of bright eyes, warm smiles, and staff did a great job of making it feel like the 30th day of school. So everything's firing pretty good, and we're very blessed.
Thank you, sir. Good job. I just want to say a few words to my staff and to my board and to my parents. Probably October, I was gonna do it in September, but probably October, the state board will have met by then, and I would have been able to sit down and share the district data with my board and with my public. But probably in October, I'm going to share my, my vision for the district and our curriculum plan for the next two years. We are in the process of committing with DPI, teaming with DPI, and going with the Instructional Leadership Academy that is research-based, and it has, Robeson County is the only other district in the state that has implemented this, this program, and I met with Dr. Williamson two weeks ago, and I picked his brain. I took a team and I, and we went and picked his brain on what to look for, what the process is gonna be like, et cetera, and he shared with us that out of 38 of his schools, 37 with this program initiative, the dial moved within the growth within this district. So we're gonna commit to the same initiative, and I'm gonna tell you more about that. My principals, you know about it, because you have training coming up, but I want to share all my stakeholders, parents, community leaders, my school board, on the vision and the plan we have for the next two years, because I think I told you in the first meeting that we have, you're gonna see a different superintendent this third year, because we're gonna focus on curriculum, the things that matter. And I'm excited about that, and we're gonna need your support, and we're gonna need communications to all our stakeholders, so we can all move as one. So just, just for tonight, remember, Instructional Leadership Academy that's presented by DPI is research-based, and it's gonna focus on principal leadership, the principals as instructional leaders, and teachers as classroom leaders, and also, if done correctly, we are promised that it's gonna move our district and move our dial. So I'm excited and ready about that piece. Secondly, I want to talk a little about school safety. We can put everything in place that we need curriculum-wise and everything, cross and dotted, but if we don't feel safe in our schools, the curriculum piece is not gonna be affected. So another piece that I'm working on, and I'll roll it out, and I've been dropping hints here and there, but probably again in October, we're gonna roll out our full discipline safety plan that we have. We have safety plans now, but they're outdated, and I want to be proactive in keeping everybody safe. I want parents to know that when they send their child to our district, our schools, that we have plans in place to keep everybody safe. Not only my students, my staff, my parents, visitors, et cetera. Mr. Ross is gonna be heading up that Project Forest. He's still working with the buses, and still my administrative buses, but also I put on his shoulders to help us put together a district critical plan that's gonna keep everyone safe. We may not ever complete that plan, because it's, it's so diverse, it's so complex, that we may not never complete that plan, it's what we call a working document that we meet on a regular basis to talk about safety in our schools. We have partnered with Sheriff Reed and Chief, that is Spencer, and we've met, what, two or three times already, Mr. Ross, to put this plan together to make sure that we are trying, no, that we're not trying, we're gonna keep everybody safe. And a good, it's a component in these, in this safety plan, that we are applying for some grants to hire more security officers for our schools. I do realize that Peachton, Polkton, and Anseville, they do not have their own SO officer in Morven and Lylesville, so we, with the help of Joy and Ms. Collard and Mr. Ross, we're applying for funding to purchase SO officers, and I think Sheriff Reed has signed off on that, so all we need is the money that we're applying for, and I think it's a good chance we're gonna see those fundings, so we are thinking safety each and every day at all of our schools. Lost my train of thought. Oh, Ms. Drake, in that funding request and that grant request, there are some matching funds that we have to come up with. I'm not getting that tonight, but I just wanna plant that seed, but I'll give the board a full report when the time comes on my curriculum plan, vision for the district, and also our safety plan. I think- Uh, I think, uh, the board will definitely be excited and approve that. Also, what I'm working on, it's time for us to look at our mission and vision statement. If I ask you the question, what is our mission, our vision? I think we have two floating around. We have one up on the wall here and we have another, all means all. So it's time, uh, next couple of weeks, we're gonna start working on our vision and mission statement and we'll definitely get the board involved in that, this community and whoever needs to be involved. But it's time for us to look at our mission and vision statement, re- to revisit that piece. Next, uh, there's been a lot of talk about the ropes course at the Anson High School. The ropes course will be relocated, we have a plan for the ropes course. There's not one person up here that's against the ropes course. We have a plan to relocate the ropes course at the appropriate time. We wanna get expertise from, um, our architecture firm on the best place to place the ropes course, to get the maximum benefit from it. So Mr. Baker and Dr. Watson will be, uh, coming to you on the location of our ropes course and also maybe our rifle range, for some things that we need your help on to relocate the resources that we have, have. We're trying to strategic.
Strategically?
Place that. Where it'll benefit all of our students. And Madam Chairperson, let me check my notes here. I think that's all I have as far as my report.
Well, thank you very much. Um, I would like to, um, ask Dr. Ratliff if she's got any information for us on COVID protocols, other than if you're positive, five days isolation, five days with a mask. Is, is that it?
Come on up, ma'am. And Mr. God, we may want to assist her. If we get a call from employees saying I have COVID, explain to us what our processes are and any questions that the board may have.
Okay, um, basically, I think the board has a, a handout before you. Um, if you test positive for COVID-nineteen and are symptomatic. We made it where it would be, um, very, uh, clear and plain, because sometimes when you get sick, you get nervous. And a lot of people panic, so what we did was we tried to make it as simple, uh, in layman's terms. So stay home and away from others for five days from the date your symptoms begin. You can return to work or school on day six if you are fever free for twenty-four hours and your symptoms are improving. However, you are required to wear a mask for an additional five days after returning to work or school. And so this is a change from the fourteen days and the ten days and it's actually allowing you to get back in school quicker. But because the virus can still be contagious up to ten days, they're saying to still wear the mask. So that's why they say an additional five days, wear the mask after you return back to work.
Uh, Dr. Ratliff, I say if you are positive, test positive and are symptomatic. Now, if I take a test and I'm positive, I got no symptoms, I just keep on getting it.
Okay, if you're positive and you're asymptomatic.
Yes.
Um, if you're positive, you still have to stay home.
Okay, because this says and are symptomatic.
If you're, if you test positive for COVID-nineteen and you are asymptomatic, that means you do not exhibit any symptoms at all, just the fact that you are positive for COVID means that you need to stay at home.
Uh, well, this is and are symptomatic. That I got symptoms.
Right.
So if I'm asymptomatic, I've, that's still the same thing, that's why I'm getting that.
Yeah. I got you now, you're, you're just trying to clarify.
Number one, if you test positive for COVID-nineteen and are symptomatic.
Mm-hmm. So it's the same guy, is that what you're trying to say, right?
Yeah, so if, if I have no symptoms and I'm positive, it's the same as if I had.
That's correct, I got you now, I think, I, I, I was thinking you were thinking that it was different, but I, I understand what you're saying now.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, the same thing, if you, if you're, you test positive for COVID, do not come to work or school.
Well, if I'd read a little bit further, I say the number two is and are asymptomatic. Sorry.
No.
And in either case, you mask for five days after, that's right. In either case, you mask for five days after your second time.
That's correct.
Well, and another thing, the people who are ex- they consider themselves exposed, but they're not symptomatic, they don't have to quarantine or stay home.
That's correct.
Correct. They come back to school.
Right.
Okay.
But if you are exposed to, if you, if you know that you are exposed to a person who is known to have COVID, you will still, you'll wear a mask for ten days.
Oh, I agree with that. If we read this, we have it all right now, so thank you very much, I apologize.
No, no, that's fine, I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, because that, that helped.
Okay.
Has to clarify.
Any questions? Madam Chairperson, that's all I have for my.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Ratliff. Uh, we're down to, um, our consent items, A-O-one personnel report, A-O-two, twenty-two, twenty-three, school calendar revised, and A-O-four, title one and two spending plans. Do I hear a motion to approve these consent items?
Uh, move, we approve those eight.
We got.
One, two, and four, uh, move, we approve them.
We got a second. Um, any discussion?
I do want to compliment, uh, HR and the entire school district. Uh, I say we've hired a lot of teachers.
Oh, okay.
And, um, I know that's difficult, so we've got them, y'all help keep them.
Okay, we got a motion and a second for our consent items, um, with no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Uh, our three consent items are approved. There is no old business, our new business is C-O-one, which is, um, the September twenty-two board meeting date change recommendation. I think that we have decided that we will do training on the nineteenth and our regular meeting on the twenty, will stay on the twenty-sixth. Uh, do I have a motion to approve that under new business?
I make a motion, we approve C-O-one.
Second. We got a motion and a second, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So our meeting date will be as calendared for nine, um, twenty-sixth and the training will be on September nineteenth. Uh, our calendar items are pretty much self-explanatory. Um, next Monday this time, we'll have a holiday, so we hope we don't have any more sick folks.
Um. Ms. Gibson?
Yes.
But before we go forward, um, on there, I think the school calendar is on there for next year and I just wanted to bring to, uh, superintendent's attention, I think graduation is scheduled for a Wednesday. Um, and I don't know if that's gonna coincide with churches, um, and if that's an issue.
Hmm, okay, we moved it from, the recommendation moved it from, hmm, Wednesday and the church, I had, I didn't even think about it. Um, let me go back to the drawing board on that, uh, because Wednesday is often typically church night for people. Um, so let me take that back to the drawing board and to my committee and talk about, um, the night of the graduation. Okay?
Okay.
It was originally Tuesday, we asked for Wednesday, but the new, um.
Because it's moved to five thirty-one, May thirty-first.
If the board allowed me, let me go back to the drawing board on that one.
Okay, but as it stands right now, we've approved that calendar, that you all have revised under consent act.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, anything else?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a second.
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? We are adjourned and thank you all for being here and with us tonight and congratulations on a great first day of school.